This is a, uh, a topic of the, of the map, of an island and the proposed, uh, the proposed harvesting to go on out there. Does anybody have any questions, discussions? I know, uh, the, the Scotty, Mr. Scotty Fleming, uh, from there is here.
My only question I've got is, have we got an updated timber analysis that's going on with forestry condition?
I, I went, I guess it was two years ago with Mr. Washington, and he said at that time that there was an existing analysis that, uh, I believe Mr. Bradford had done at one time. I'm not sure what the, what the age of that, of that plant would be.
We've, we've got something that's, I want to say it's roughly sixteen, eighteen months old.
From Alabam, part of the forestry.
Well, then Lynn did. We, right after I took office, we passed them when doing that analysis. Took them a few months, but.
Can we get that and share that all with, with, so you can?
We'll get that this week. Uh, you, you have any?
Um, I was curious, uh, I know this doesn't have to do with the bidding process, but, uh, will there be other, other companies that would be able to offer buildings?
I, I should think that we'd be open to proposals. This is basically an unsolicited proposal.
Right.
I, I will say that one of the, one of the concerns that I, I have and the reason I wanted to put up a, a copy of the map, and you also have one in your, in your package, is, uh, from, from my visit, it's been two years since I was, since I was out there, but Mr. Washington and myself, or the forester, for those of you that don't know Lynn, um, we spent an afternoon tromping around. You know if I'm gonna go tromping around in the woods, it's, uh, it's an unusual occurrence, but, but, uh, the island that is in the lower portion here, I had some concerns, uh, equipment going through the, the low areas there and tearing, tearing that area up. Uh, I've had some conversations with Mr. Fleming and, and other personnel about, you know, what we could do to, to prevent that. But, uh, other than that, uh, do you, does anybody have any questions for, for Scotty or these, these fellows? Okay. Um, Mr. Smith, you have anything?
Uh, we were on the council.
Can, can you wait till after the, make sure?
Sure, sure. We were gonna go, if you remember, and look at it. And we were gonna go this afternoon, and Shannon Lewis said they were having a bunch of blood coming this way, and Humphrey said, their news said they had one coming this way, and we decided we'd, uh, uh, and he ran it off.
All right. Uh, you want to put it off for that work there? We'll set it for the next work session, and we'll, we'll get out there between now and then and take a look. I might go with you one more, one more time.
They have a video.
Oh, okay. That helps. All right. Next is, uh, discuss agreement with Jackson County for voting machines. Uh, Ms. Phillips?
This is an agreement with the county to supply the city with an election manager, machine manager, and the use of the voting machines at $250 per machine.
Any questions or discussion? We'll put that on the agenda for next week. We have struck out four from the agenda for this evening, and we were seeking a little further information there. Next is, uh, discuss budget amendment for the street department. I talked about this in the last, uh, work session, and this was tabled, uh, last week for further discussion this evening. Anyone have any questions or discussion?
This, uh, this item, uh, we're talking about the property with the moment that we're gonna let for the rest of the year, is that what we're talking about?
No, sir, we approved that last week. This is the, this is the repair on the dozer and the badger for the street department. Uh, I'll have to tell you, those are two repairs that will require a budget amendment of $65,984.
Are these ones that have already been done?
Yes, sir.
We haven't received the badger back, it's still there.
May I ask, uh, where this money's coming from? Is it in the budget or?
No, these would require a budget amendment, Mr. Smith.
I, uh, we're not gonna do both of them, we're taking the one. Uh, so I get, I assume the next one's coming at the next work session, I'll write again.
Uh, I think there's some question of the, we're talking about on the caterpillar for the, for the sanitation department.
One question.
I think there's some question on the, the age of that, of that piece of equipment, and whether it's feasible to be fixed, or if we need to, to look at perhaps replacing that in the, in the near, in the near future.
It hasn't been fixed yet.
Think that some work had been done on it, but it was halted in process.
Mr. Washington, is that, I'm assuming that's the year?
Yeah.
What have I done to?
That was, that was the thing that we were, gonna put off until we got some further information.
My, my biggest concern is that we're fixing to spend a total of eight, something thousand, I think. Uh, we have to see, none of which were followed, there was no money in the budget, and the council was not there. You have to still go ahead and do it, and, and I understand that the mayor's, I've been on the job for a year and a half, but sometimes you have to learn these things, and, and, but since that all has happened, and this has been going on for quite a while, I, I've not heard the mayor saying one time that, uh, I'm sorry for what I did, that I will not do it again, or if we have this situation again and we don't have money in the budget, we'll come forward to council and get it approved. All of those things, uh, make it very difficult to vote, because, to be honest.
Any others discussion? I've, I've said, yeah, had a lot to say about this so far. I, I agree with proper procedure, but was probably not following in this case, but we have suppliers that have done work for the city of Scottsboro, and they, they deserve to be, to be paid. So, we'll put it on next week if nobody has any other questions or discussion. Next is, uh, discuss change order for downtown square project. This came up a few weeks ago, we had some people out, a motion was made, uh, but died for lack of a second. Um, this is the change order, uh, for the square, the second phase of the square renovation, where they ran into some foundations that, uh, the new sidewalk requirement wouldn't meet up with the existing foundation, and they had to do some, some work for aesthetics there. Is there any questions or discussion, uh, around this?
What's the total?
It was nineteen thousand, what did you tell me that? Yeah, I believe it was approximately nineteen thousand dollars. We'll get you, we'll get you the exact number before, before the council meeting next week. It was just shy of twenty thousand, if I'm not mistaken.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six is what you had in your packet that night.
Okay, I apologize. Me working off memory sometimes is my profession, I apologize. So approximately twenty-six thousand, and again, we'll get, we'll get you the exact number before next week.
May I ask one more question? Uh, I have a question. My understanding is that this has to be inspected, and then I find out that it's inspected by the people who did the work, because, and that's, is it correct, man?
Uh, state inspected it, didn't it?
They did the previous one.
Yes.
The one that had issue on Broad Street next to Willow.
Next to Willow, who inspected it? The engineer.
The engineer?
Mm-hmm.
And he worked for them?
Works for the city.
City, you, you inspected it?
Land engineer.
Land engineer inspected it.
They just inspect on phase two.
And they approved it?
Approved what?
They approved the project. You said they inspected it?
They've approved what we've done.
Yeah.
They had some items on the punch list, what you just said, they had it.
Right.
May we, may we see that?
The punch list?
Uh, were they inspected it?
Yes.
I can see they mentioned inspection reports, is that all you need?
You can do what?
Get some inspection reports?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
I got, I got a question, that's twenty-six thousand, that's over, bud.
It was a change order, what, what happened, uh, again, is if you look across the street, the angle that these sidewalks were originally built was at an angle that was not ADA compliant. It was a too steep of, too steep of an angle, potentially dangerous if you were in a wheelchair or something like that. So when they went back, they reduced the angle of the sidewalk, dropping it, dropping it down. That exposed some of the foundation of these older, older buildings, right? You don't know that until you tear a sidewalk apart. So what they did, if, you know, in an example, I can say it's across the street here, they basically built a secondary curb that matched up to the, to the existing, the sideline of the buildings, right? Uh, so it was either that or the foundation exposed.
When, when that motion failed to pass that night, um, that was a projected change order amount. They did not move forward once they completed the section of sidewalk that they were on on Laurel Street, so they did not form any work on the sidewalks on Market Street, I guess, across the street from the post office and in front of the post office. And the state wouldn't allow them to do a section of the sidewalk, they had to do a complete block if they were gonna do it. So, when the change order was failed to pass, or the motion didn't pass, or whatever, then Lambert stopped, and what you've got is this three hundred and twelve thousand is the projected project total to date, uh, and so Lambert has since left the job site. So what percentage of the job has been completed?
Probably about ninety percent.
Basically one section was not, was not completed.
Right, because we didn't know the unknowns. If we got in there and it was, end up being five thousand over budget, you know, we didn't wanna, you know, have that risk.
What's for the job site?
It's probably posted Market Street.
And what's the plan for that? You said they left the job site at this time?
There was no movement.
We've, the states closed the project out, pretty much. We're in the process, they did the final walkthrough about two weeks ago, there was a few things on the punch list, uh, patching curbs, but they've, they've accepted the project and, and closing it out.
But we've discussed a, had a dozen times, everything we do comes back, and we have to add more money to it. No matter what project we do, it's, it's hard on the team. Maybe it's not, maybe just for me, it's hard.
How do you close out a project if it's not a pension? That'd be said, that's my question.
Because if we didn't approve the, the change order, they, they terminated, well, they terminated contract, we just completed what they had finished or uncovered. Um, but we still can get the, the funds, uh, it's a cost reimbursement program. The city pays out the estimate, like, the first one was a hundred sixty-three, and then you send in a, a request for eighty percent, and then the next S was a hundred and eighteen, you send in a request for eighty percent, so you keep, you still get the money. Um, but as far as when they, when they pulled off the con, the job, you know, they had somewhere else to go, um, that's when they stopped the project.
But one element to lift up is that when this cost over run comes in, they don't pay any of that, we pay it up.
They'll pay up to percentage.
We usually pay the max of most of everything so far, because you come to us to prove, so.
Next is discuss parking on Broad Street, Willow and Laurel Streets. This is, it came for the council, uh, a few weeks ago, maybe a month or two at this juncture. But, as y'all know, that the, the traffic flow, uh, from the square to, uh, Willow Street on, on Broad Street there is, is very, very tight. We discussed that there were, there was four options, one is, or two of them are parallel parking on one side or the other of that street, wide of the traffic path. Um, the other is one way in one direction, and of course, the other viable option is one way in the other. Talking with, uh, some business owners that are the other side of Willow Street, they pointed out that, uh, we had already closed a street access on the other side of them. Uh, if we make it a one-way coming towards the square, we've kind of limited their access from, from both directions. Uh, so I don't think that that is a, uh, healthy solution. Um, we talked about one-way leaving the square going towards Willow Street, uh, that will require some changing in the switching of the red light, uh, there, since that is a state highway. Judge, we approximated the cost of that would be thirty to forty thousand dollars.
That's what they gave me, right.
Um, I have talked with the property owner, uh, of the corner, uh, there, and it's up, you have a copy in your packet, but it's up, it's up on the screen behind us. Uh, the intersection to the top left-hand corner is the intersection that we're talking about. It's a little clipped off at the top, but if you see, uh, across there, there is a lot where that used to be, uh, an old Scottsboro Hotel that burned many years ago. If we go to parallel parking, we're gonna, we're gonna lose some parking spaces along, along Broad Street there, but I have talked with the property owner there. They are willing to pay a bulk of the cost of paving that, uh, paving that lot if the city could, could, uh, come up with some matching funds, and I don't think he's asking for half or, or even, uh, a quarter, but, uh, just kicking in some. He's willing to make that public, public parking, to make up, uh, for the spaces that we would lose, uh, on Broad Street or across the street from that, from that lot. So, I, I think that's something that we should, we should consider. Um, and I, I think the most sense is, is to make that parallel parking on that street, but that's my personal opinion. Is there any discussion from the council?
With the, uh, changing the angle of the parking, that's the, I mean, we might lose one or two parking places on each side with a sharper angle.
Josh and I looked at that, because Mr. Parks had mentioned that in back, what, the fifties or, anyway, he gave you a history on, there was a, a greater angle there, and so Josh did some measurements, uh, if you, what's the distance between the way the cars are now?
It's about seventeen feet now, but that varies, because if you get, if you get a big truck, pull up to the curb, you're, you're less than that.
But if you go to a steeper angle, you go-
You go about four feet, but you'll probably lose two on each side.
You're gonna lose two parking places on each side. So that's four places.
That's four, didn't we say that we lost four spaces if we make a parallel parking?
You go from eleven, you said.
So you're still losing, you're still losing the same amount of parking space.
You get four more feet.
And here again, I mean, I, I think if that lot across the street is paved, I think that actually increases your parking for that, for that area right there. But again, that'll be something that we'll have to let Mr. Cameron, uh, look at, and what that, what that would look like for us. But this, from driving the area, and, and really sitting back and, and looking at it, is what made the most sense, to be, but again, that's my personal opinion, it's not, uh, it's not something that I would, that I would say that I'm, did tell.
Everything going north or south of the parking, north or south?
Here again, I mean, I think that's up for discussion. I, I'm not locked into either way, I just think that we should have parallel parking on, on one side, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you guys sit, speak, maybe I'll tell you, unless you say which, which side you'd like to say, I've already said what I, you know, I think, I think the parallel parking is, is the thing that makes the most sense. And again, you know, I, I think we have a potential to actually increase the parking in the, in the area.
May I say, if, if you live in a parking lot, like you said, you really think the people would park there and walk a block toward the square, when you've got parking spots all around the square that nobody uses? Very few people park in one block off the square and walk through the square.
I think, I think the concern from the business owners in the area was that you're taking four parking spaces away from their immediate, their immediate area. I think that that is the logical overflow for that immediate area.
But if you don't park there, it's, it's really mad, isn't it? I'm just going by, if you notice the parking spots, we already have, we have a number around the square, very few people park. It would be a perfect place for people who work on the square, who own businesses, to park, if they don't need it.
We'll put it on the next work session, I'd like for everybody to go down to that area and give your, what the, what a proposed solution would be. I will say that every time that I go through there during the day, just about every parking space in that area is, is taken, and you're gonna cut it, you're gonna cut it by four. Uh, I think that, you know, parking is an issue in the, in that general area, which also makes traffic flow an issue in that general area. All right, next is, uh, discuss, uh, truck routes in, in downtown. I'll open the floor for discussion.
I have a board to be put on, on the agenda, so I'll, I guess I'll go, I, uh, I guess it was like a couple weeks ago when I came, I was actually coming to a, a meeting and I saw a truck, so, down there off of Charlotte Avenue, and I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that we don't have a defined access point for these trucks to go and appropriate signage, um, either on Highway seventy-two, or when they get on Broad Street. So I'd like for us to discuss some, some sort of solution. I think everybody knows my opinion on Porter Road, and I brought everyone a copy of the Thursday, June second, twenty sixteen, where our form later actually was quoted on the front page of Porter Road, might be a truck route. So, that's all I have to say.
I, I'll say that I had a conversation with Bear earlier, you know, as far as signage goes, I think, uh, the power electric board is, is not in favor of signage over the streets. Is that, is that accurate?
Across Laurel Street, that's correct, across the lot there.
Which would be, you know, signage-wise would be the best solution there. I, I've gotta be honest, I, I think, we, we've talked about this for several years, but I think we have to have, start having a serious conversation about the Park Avenue Bridge and the weight restriction there. Cecil Street has been talked about, I have concerns about Cecil Street, I've expressed them to, to each of you individually. We have increased the pedestrian traffic, uh, on Cecil Street tremendously over the last several years. Uh, you've got now a, uh, intermediate school in that general vicinity, that we've just increased the student, teacher, and parent population by, by a third. Uh, you've got a big baseball complex there, you've got a, uh, memorial park that's being developed, you've got a walking trail, you've got a junior high school, you've got softball fields, you've got soccer fields. The pedestrian traffic in that area, and I was talking with somebody that, you know, some of the cross-country team uses that area to, to run on and things, you've got an increased pedestrian traffic on Cecil Street, a majority of which are minors. Um, I've talked with some of the industries, and, and sometimes we act like this is a bad problem, this is a good problem to have. Uh, trucks going in and out means that we have people working, there's jobs, there's commerce being committed. Um, if we were not, uh, didn't have trucks going to these plants, that would mean those workers would not have anywhere to go during the day. In a perfect world, those facilities would be sitting in an industrial park. That's not where they are. The plants are where they are. Um, we've got to find a way for, for trucks to be able to get to those plants, get in and get out as efficiently and as safely as possible. Um, I, and, part of the issue becomes that those trucks get to Broad and Parks, if they make that turn, then there's a sign that says five-ton weight restriction, you know, and they're, and they're tracked. It's a, it's a hefty investment, of course, as we've, as we've discussed, but I think it's something we have to, as I say, have a serious conversation about how we, how we accomplish, uh, making a safe route in and out of those, of those facilities. That's all I've got to say, but. Anybody else?
We, we just described it, it was hardly anywhere from getting in and out. When you say we need to fix it, some way we need to get it started, but they got to do it today and tomorrow, so, so we need to make up our mind with what we have, which way we- So we need to make up our mind with what we have, which way we're gonna go. Put advertising up where they know where that's at and then go in and out. And, and no matter which way we go, somebody's not gonna be happy. We, I mean, we've discussed this a long time and, but we've got to do that. And we just need to pick the best way to go, uh, part of trucks and part of projects. And let's designate that as that way and get it over with. Whether it be Cecil Street or whether it be, uh, whatever, except down Charlotte and through the avenue, we don't, we don't wanna go that way.
I agree. We don't wanna go any, any of the side streets. We have, we have no trucks, signs there, of course. Apparently they can't see or read them. They're going down all the side streets from Cecil Street all the way down to Park Avenue, all the way down to Charlotte.
Because we haven't given them a clear-cut way to get in and out, really.
Very true, but also their GPSes are sending that way.
But we don't.
That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother issue there. I, I've got a question for Josh. Josh, do you have a recommendation on something like that, of your, the engineer, right? Do you have something that you would rather save?
Porter Road is built for trucks.
It's not. It's not. That contract right here shows it's not.
Sir, you're out of order.
Oh, okay.
When, when Porter Road was designed, uh, as you can see, the lane, the, the drag of trucks, the design of trucks, they should rebuild, um, from the fellow hospital, um, almost all the way to the voice side. They rebuilt on around the bridge cover and a few more spots on Porter Road that were built. But it, it was designed for trucks, um, and I, I know, I, yeah, I know that, but it's, it's, it's probably the easiest and safest way in and out, since you look at it here.
My question on Porter Road, I mean, there's no showing for trucks to get out. In my concern, there'll be animals traffic, you know. That, that was a big concern for me. So that's an afternoons question.
The problem with Cecil and Broad is when those trucks stack up in those turn lanes, that's just, it causes a nightmare running there. There's one of those. Those trucks can get turned in. And we moved the stop bars back to help, but the steel, those stop bars are regulatory. A lot of people pull up there that can't see that are pulling up off of Cecil. So it's, it's not, it's not an easy thing anywhere.
I'm sure those trucks are coming to follow along. And I didn't know if there's a way that we could regulate that time that they deliver, pick up, and slow that going.
I actually reached out and made a call, uh, asking about what their, their peak times was. And for, for maple industry, they, they have two types of truck, truck traffic. There's interplant, uh, interplant trucking and then there's, uh, vendors, uh, picking up, um. Peak times, uh, for customer pickups are eleven AM to eight PM. Uh, peak, uh, maples interplant traffic is six AM to two PM. So, uh, that's, you know, a better part of the, a better part of the day that you have. And, you know, if you overlap those two from eleven to two, you have both of those, both of those. Now that's just the maples, uh, traffic. That doesn't include the Lozier, the Lozier, uh, traffic, you know.
Just my understanding of maple is a strictly using Porter Road right now. I believe they've had about three claims going in and out of Cecil Street. I think they're, I think it's the Lozier trucks are mainly using Cecil Street and everyone's waiting to get in and out.
Well, and, and of course, as I guess Mr. Smith pointed out, I don't think anybody's gonna be happy no matter what routes you, you take. And I will admit that, you know, I wouldn't want them traveling up and down my, my street. But here again, that is, sometimes we have to put, put aside our, our selfishness, you know, for the betterment of the overall community. I think the solution, and again, I've said this to each of you individually, is to spread that, that traffic out and not, not dedicate them to one route in and, in and out there. Um, you know, and maybe there are certain times of the day that, you know, one route is better than, than another. Um, but I, I think we've got to improve the access and I think we've got to greatly improve the signage and, and directing these, these, these acts. You know, we've got to give them an opportunity to, to factor GPS. It's like somebody said, their, their GPS is sending them, uh, those ways, but, you know, their GPS doesn't know that they're driving a, driving anything with. Anything else? We'll move to, uh, delegations, um.